We'll go ahead and call them in order. We'll start with the Pudge Allegiant. We'll go ahead and, any additions or deletions or corrections for the agenda?
Nope.
Take a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you, Brian. Motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll say.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Thank you. Consent agenda. Is there anything in there that you would like to discuss?
I just want to highlight the one item under the assessment policy as we discussed. So the stuff that's in red, that's being deleted. The stuff that's recalculated is the addition to the, to the policy.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Paul. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Thank you. Uh, no visitors. Mayor's report. Just a little reminder, the... Some of you might not have received your March billing. They did get mailed out February 27th. Some people are just now getting them in the mail today. Ain't sure what happened there. We, they are postmarked. We, we have seen the stamp mark on them. We know they were postmarked. So the city is going to waive penalties for the, that billing because you got them passed when they were due. So just so, that's just an FYI, and hopefully, we can figure out what happened there. Uh, I have no cards for public forum. So next will be our public hearing. We'll start.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. We have a public hearing tonight for the Southwest Reconstruction. Um, it is going to be the final assessment hearing. So we'll, uh, have a presentation. Uh, property was notified, so you'll notice that through the newspaper. Uh, we'll have a presentation. Uh, we'll have a public hearing, soliciting public comments, written comments, and then there is resolutions in your council packet to adopt those assessments in a, also a resolution awarding potentially the construction contract, uh, if we're moving forward the project. So, um, even pull open their presentation. So, so we've done, uh, the preliminary assessment hearing. We've done another one, so we'll follow that same format. Uh, so again, Southwest Reconstruction is what we're here for tonight. Uh, I'm Brandon Theobal, W- Brandon Theobal, the WH Casson Company Consulting City Engineer. Um, outline for tonight, we'll talk about the project area, uh, quick background, I'll talk about the proposed construction, uh, schedule, cost, um, including some assessment costs being proposed tonight, um, and then what the assessment process is, um, and then have some public comments. So again, uh, the numbers we're going to talk about tonight were sent, uh, in the notices. Uh, council, uh, cannot increase, uh, cost of those tonight. Uh, can decrease if they, uh, so such feel, so. Continuing, project area. Uh, staff is calling the Southwest Casson Reconstruction. It's a southwest part of our town, uh, bordered on the south of Highway 14, to the east of Highway 57, to the north of Old Highway 14, uh, Veterans Memorial Park, uh, and then on the west side of Mastin Creek, as you can see the area there. Uh, those different colors there are different REUs. We're proposing an REU-based assessment, uh, calculation. Uh, we have some different colors there based on some commercial properties. There's some apartment complexes that we'll talk, um, in more detail as we go on here. So, that's the overview. Uh, quick background, some of you were here in October 23rd, uh, well, I'm sorry, not in October 23rd. In October 23rd, we had a feasibility report. It was presented to council. That's the first step whenever we do these projects, uh, looking at the Southwest reconstruct. Uh, so existing streets in the project area were fair to poor condition. Sewer and water mains had its expected useful life. Uh, storm sewer was inadequate. Got a lot of drive over, or excuse me, uh, valley gutters as you drive, uh, across the pavement, uh, go up and over the gutter lines that extend in there. Uh, and then sidewalks were just on the west side of Second Avenue and kind of the Casey's blocks in the east part of the project. That's, uh, quick background. Uh, proposed construction, uh, what the feasibility report laid out, uh, and ultimately council approved, directed us to produce final plans and go up for the project bid. That's what we've completed to the, up to date. And we're here tonight for the final assessment hearing. Um, essentially a full reconstruction, replacing the roadway, replacing the sanitary sewer, uh, with new manholes, new sewer services to your property line, new water mains, new water services, new storm sewer with increased capacity, and then creation of a permanent stormwater basin on the west side of Fifth Street Southwest, uh, some city-owned property along Mastin Creek. Uh, construction of subdrain and subdrain services. That's been a practice that the city started to implement, uh, some time ago now, I guess. Uh, we're basically putting a subdrain underneath the roadway, stubbing out subdrain services for sump pumps and whatnot to, to drain into those, and then into our pond. Replacing the sidewalk and pedestrian ramps with ADA compliant ramps. We have to, anytime we do a, a reconstruction project on Second Avenue, and then no replacement of the sidewalk on the Casey's block, as that's newer sidewalk that Casey's built, um, recently. Uh, so that's what's proposed. Um, sched- schedule, uh, we do have a, a final assessment hearing is tonight. Presuming, uh, the city council's moving forward the project, we are going to be, uh, constructing the project in early spring of 2025, uh, with completion scheduled for this fall. I will note, uh, we, we are anticipating if the council moves forward to have an open house to talk about more of the construction side of things, and I'll, I'll kind of talk about it, that at the end. So, that's the project schedule. Um, cost here presented up on the screen, and again, what was sent to, uh, you homeowners with the full assessment rule, uh, laying that out. On the left-hand side, they're kind of crossed out is what we had at the preliminary assessment hearing. Uh, so those are the numbers that were presented. Um, the current project cost after the project was bid is shown on the right-hand side. They're in bold. So you can see total estimated project cost, about 5.6 million. There's 89 residential equivalent units, so a house is a house is a house, unless it's an apartment or commercial. Um, we assign more REUs to those larger, uh, commercial properties. That would be, um, Plaza 57, Casey's General Store, and some of the apartments along the south side of the project. Um, so ultimately, council up until this point has assigned, um, REUs, one REU. So if you're in a single-family residential house, is just over 9,000, that $9,030 there. Two REUs are two times that amount, six REUs, and eight REUs, you can see the numbers there. Um, again, that's the proposed assessed amount to the property, um, due to, due to the benefit of the project. Um, they are senior citizen deferrals, so if, if everything's moving forward and you feel like you're in a, um, senior citizen deferral situation, uh, come into City Hall, um, talk to Lynn and Tim about the deferral process, because there is a process to, uh, have some senior deferrals. Um, assuming, again, everything moves forward tonight, uh, November 15th of this year, um, you can pay your assessment. Um, if not, it'll move forward on your 2026 taxes, be an extra line item on your taxes there. Um, the proposed interest rate, um, per the old policy, as we all know, interest rates have been creeping up, um, was going to end up being about 9%, so staff previous directions to lower that to 5.5% um, based on a revised assessment policy, knowing that, uh, 9% is, um, you know, potentially a, a large number. That council is not interested in going down that road. So, again, if you do nothing, um, that assessment will apply for 15 years at that interest rate. Those are the costs. I'm going to dive in a little bit more here and kind of zoom in and kind of walk around the project. Uh, again, the color shows the different REUs. Uh, purple is a re- one residential equivalent unit. Uh, green is two residential equivalent units. Blue is six residential equivalent units. And then the brown color is eight residential equivalent units. Um, this is the northeast part of the project there. Um, the first green blob is the city of Casson. That's some parkland, uh, Mastin Creek floodplain that we own. So the city is, um, a benefiting property owner, um, in this assessment role. So then, uh, they are kind of paying their fair share of that portion of the project there. Um, and then you can see some residential, um, houses around the project in purple there, um, that will be assessed. Uh, Ian, if you want to continue on there. Uh, moving to the east there, that brown, uh, area there is Plaza 57. So that is being proposed at eight REUs. You can see that project there, um, handles essentially a full city block around both sides of it. So council reviewed this on the preliminary stages, and then ultimately, um, agreed to continue on the process of those, uh, eight REUs for that project there. Oh, we zoomed down a little south there. You can see we have a commercial building there. I'm right off 57. That's one REU being proposed. Um, if you want to keep going, Ian. Uh, continuing on the south, again, on the east side is 57. Um, that blue area there is Casey's Convenience Store, which is six REUs, uh, surrounded by residential units, um, that are one REUs. Uh, this goes to the west now, um, kind of southwest of Plaza 57, all residential units there, so they're being proposed as one REU. This is going further southwest. Those green three parcels there, um, are the two apartment complex and the other lot that's owned for, uh, apartment complex, the third one. Um, that is ultimately being proposed right now at two REUs. These are the green ones, and again, residential units, um, are shown as one REU. Uh, so the REU is how the assessments were calculated, um, and the notice that you all received, um, and the numbers we talked about, um, with the assessment role, and there's going to the east there, uh, with the green, uh, two REU being the church there, um, right behind Subway. I mean, the rest of the residential units there is one REU. Um, appeal process, uh, this is set by Minnesota State Statute 429. Um, it's a, it's a kind of a cumbrous process in some sense, but it, it's probably good from a homeowner's perspective, so that way you homeowners are given, uh, notice of what the council is potentially doing with two public hearings here. This is the sec- being the second of them. Um, so tonight, uh, would be the time, if you have any written objections, uh, would be considered tonight by the city council. Um, they need to be submitted in writing, um, if you are going to object to the assessment. And then with 30 days after the adoption of the assessment, assuming the council moves forward tonight, an owner may appeal to district court, um, by severing notice to the clerk, Linda Rappi. Um, clerk shall furnace applicant have certified copy of the objections filed, um, objections, assessment rolls, and all papers necessary present the, present the appeal, but the assessment roll was sent to you guys as the one that's being proposed tonight. Uh, and then as the process moves forward, the court shall affirm the assessment or set the assessment aside or to order a reassessment. Um, and then if you do not prevail, the cost incurred by the city can be taxed by the court. So all objections to systems shall, assessment shall be deemed waived unless presented on such appeal, um, again, tonight. That's the process in a nutshell, kind of wrapping up, uh, what we had with respect to, um, notices. So this is the, going to be the final, um, assessment hearing, very likely the final assessment hearing. So, um, that's what I had for presentation, Mayor and Council. Um, any questions? I think maybe a little discussion at the council level if needed. If not, uh, probably open up the public hearing and, um, hear from our citizens.
Anybody up here have any questions? If not, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If you'd like to say anything, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and we will listen.
And just one thing to note, Mayor, Mayor, if you don't mind, um, this is a hearing on the, on the assessment amount. This isn't regarding the construction cost. We'll have a meeting that will send you notice, um, um, at a future date, and I have that date, and I'll pull it open here. But, um, not, not necessarily meeting to talk about certain construction-related aspects if they don't apply to the assessed amount, so.
Thank you.
By the way, that, that meeting's going to be April 8th at 6 o'clock, so.
At?
At, right here at City Hall. So, April 8th, 6 o'clock, and again, we'll send you some notice and some information. Um, and during construction, we'll have a full-time person to contact, uh, during the construction to keep it as impactful as we can. But that's the time to talk about the project, uh, assuming we move forward, so.
Anybody got any public comments?
Sandra moves off. I live at 307 Fourth Street Southwest. And I have a concern. I live in, uh, townhomes there, and, uh, assessment we're getting is $9,030. We are not getting sidewalk or anything, and when I came to the first meeting on this, the assessment was larger. When I went to the second meeting, they said they were not going to do anything with our area. All we had to pay for was the driveway coming into our area. So I'm wondering what changed.
Yeah, th- this is the second meeting, so I'm not sure where the second meeting, um, there was some conversation in the initial feasibility report, um, regarding, um, applying assessments to those end houses, because you, you do have a private driveway that goes, um, into a private driveway that serves those four units. Um, the council discussed it and amended the, the feasibility report to include, um, assessments for those, uh, houses. Um, the reason, I think Councilor Johnson brought it up, was, um, this project is a neighborhood being reconstructed. The whole neighborhood shares in the new water, the new sewer, the new street, the new subdrain. Um, so you guys are part of the neighborhood, um, in the department assessment.
So what's going in there then for us? The new water and sewer?
Yep, to the property lines. From there, you guys have private water and sewer, just like any other house, you know, on the private property.
So actually, you're not coming into our area at all?
Um, into your private area now, just like we're not going to.
So why are we paying for this assessment?
Just like we were not, we were going to do a driveway, just like any other house. Uh, water and sewer service, just like any other house.
Yep.
Water mains, just like any other house, and the road, just like any other house. So, um, your private area, you're right, is off the public right-of-way, but so was somebody else's public driveway. So I think that was the, the rationale of the council, um, that they're a property, a residential equivalent unit, in a neighborhood that's being reconstructed, they should be part of the assessment. That was, that was.
Okay, so, but I don't have any sidewalk or anything like that to pay for, so, uh, curb?
Yeah, so the, the, the only sidewalk that's going to be replaced is only replacing down Second, um, Avenue from Old 14, um, to the south on the one side of the road. I think there's one house that was missing sidewalk, so the whole neighborhood's not going to get sidewalk. It's only going to be where the, filling in the one lot that, uh, was not, uh, was missing sidewalk.
But I'm still not getting curb and gutter. You know, why am I paying for that?
Your, your private driveway abuts public curb and gutter.
But why are we, each one of us paying $9,030 for a section this wide?
Yep, because my residential equivalent unit, you're getting a.
So if I have to change something in my area, is the city going to help me pay for that then?
On your private side?
Yeah.
No, not traditionally. Just like any other house that would be abutting, um, the project, it'd be their private sewer and water lateral.
So I'm not going to win, am I?
I don't know how to answer that.
You don't know how to answer that. I don't know how.
I'm Renee Rodell, 209 Fourth Street Southwest. So we're each paying, well, the majority of us, because some are paying more, like she was saying, $9,030 for this project. Why are we being charged 5.5% interest on something we really don't have a say in? You all want to make us think we have a say by having us come here, but you're already going to do what you have planned anyway, so it really doesn't make a difference. But why am I paying taxes? That's an extra $44,000 a year that I'm paying in just interest alone. If my math is right, I did it quick, but if you add the interest on to this, because if it's not paid, whatever, whatever, that's all the interest. If I don't pay the full amount by November 15th of every year, I have to pay interest on that amount.
Each year?
It's only one time.
Each year.
Right, but I'm still paying interest on it. Why am I paying interest on it?
If, if you pay it in it, if you pay it before November 15th, then you do not have to incur that.
Can you jump back to the slide, Ian? I don't know the number, but, on the cost slide? Yeah, so a lot on there, uh, prepaid by November 15th of 2025, that would be the, just the one REU, the $9,030. Um, or if it's not paid, then that's when it appears on your taxes, if not paid. Um, and then there would be an interest rate, just like you would take out a loan for $9,000.
But I'm not taking out the loan.
Understand that. Um, so then, that would be an interest rate that would apply to the unpaid, because the city has to borrow money. In turn, if it's not paid, then the interest would apply to the, the debt service that the city took out for the project, or, you know, could have been making F on a money market account. So, just, it's, it's essentially like the interest that would be on a loan.
So we're actually paying more with our interest than what's actually on here, right? Because if it's not paid, I'm sorry, but I don't have an extra $4,000 a year to pay interest on something that's not.
I, I don't think.
Not sure where you're getting the $4,000, ma'am. I mean, you'd, you'd pay 5.5% on 9,000, but it's, it's been over 15 years. So I mean, you, you, you wouldn't have $4,000. I'm not sure where that number's coming from.
Yeah, just 9,000 divided, divided by 15 years is only $602, so I don't know what the interest would be.
I mean, the interest, I mean, the total interest is 400, like, 496.65, 5.5% over 9,000. So, I'm not sure, I just don't know where you're getting that number from.
Well, like I said, I did it quick, but.
Sure.
So, Tim, correct my math. You're the math guy, so.
So they're going to put in new drain systems, sewer drain systems, right? Is somebody going to come out and clean those drain systems? Because I've been there almost five years, and every time it rains, it clogs up. So I'm running out there cleaning that drain system so it's not flooding my driveway.
Is that a department complex or relive?
No, it's a single-family home.
No, is it?
It's right at the end of my driveway.
Is it in the area? Where, where do you live by?
209 Fourth Street. So it's two houses back behind where the old shop go used to be.
Gotcha. So yes, we are, um, increasing the size of the storm sewer throughout the project. So all the water that essentially is at Highway 14 drains due north down Third, Second, and Fourth Ave. I'm sorry.
But none of them, none of them drains are ever cleaned out, and so it all runs down.
Yep, so we're going to, we're going to intercept a bunch of water and then run that to the west and get that draining to the creek, so it's not coming down to your street. So we're going to increase the capacity of the storm sewer, which in turn, two things, one, reducing on a flow, and then maintenance will still have to be maintained like any other storm sewer, but.
So who maintains it? Because right now, the one that's sitting there, it's got cracks all over in it. It's, it, there's pieces broken off. So who maintains that?
Well, come by fall, it should all be replaced. If this project moves forward, it's going to get a full reconstruction, so.
I think that's what maybe isn't being, uh, clearly, as clearly articulated. It's there, we're replacing, there isn't any existing storm sewer underground in certain parts. There's the above-ground sort of gutters that kind of poop down like this when you go across them. So there'll be an in-ground storm sewer.
Correct.
The curb and gutter will be replaced that will also help with the water flow. And the size or, or having those storm sewers makes a big difference in terms of being able to redirect the water away from your property in the first place. So the storm, the storm drains that you see now will be replaced, and they hopefully will not accumulate quite as much debris because they will be newer and in better shape, so stuff will not be gathering on top of the broken parts. Does that make sense?
Right, but it's still going to need to be maintained. Even though it's brand-new, it still needs to be made. So who maintains it? Because I'm not gonna, and right now, I'm the one that's out there scraping everything off of it so that it's draining every time it rains.
If you have a drain that's plugging, you can always call City Hall or let Public Works know, and they'll come out and clear those drains for you.
By the time it floods halfway up my driveway?
Well, I mean, we can't control for leaves that fall during a storm immediately and plug up a drain. But I mean, if there's something like that, I mean, that's their job, and they, they come out and do it on a frequent basis throughout town. So I mean, that'd be the proper avenue for, for dealing with the plugged drain.
If you see the leaves accumulating on top of the drain.
I gotta run out and clean them off.
No, no. What we're saying is, if you see it before even a storm comes, if you notice that the, the debris is starting to pile up on those grates, call the city, and they can send someone out to clean it before there's a storm.
Okay, because none of them are ever cleaned. I can walk out there right now, and I bet you every single one of them have a bunch of stuff piled up in front of them.
I know the street sweepers did start going through yesterday, because I did see them out.
They started last week after they cleared the snow. But, yeah, so they are street sweeping right now. But I mean, if you notice one that's plugged up, please let us know, because the guys will come out and, and work on that. I mean, that's. And this, like, really a catalyst for this whole project is eliminating some of these water issues in Southwest. I mean, that's one of the reasons the city council prioritized this project, is to eliminate, I mean, because we know that's an area that's had a lot of impact from water, from flooding. So I mean, with the upsizing of all these stormwater, you know, that's, the intention is to make it a lot better for folks living in that area, so they don't have flooding in their basements and things like that anymore. I mean, I think that's really the reason we started attacking on this project, so.
Absolutely. I mean, the reason I was asking if you were by the apartments, because there is another, um, spot that's flooded, um, right in front of the apartments. There's another low point in that road there. Um, I know Public Works has seen that flooded up and over the curb and gutter, flooded some cars. So, um, that's one of the things that we talked about in the final design. We've added, uh, tripled the amount of catch basins there and doubled the size of the pipe, um, right at that low point there in front of the, front of the two apartment complexes to reduce the frequency of flooding in that area too, so that was a priority. Um, furthermore, I think Public Works was actually there to help clean the grates or pulling the grates off during, you know, when it was flooding. So, I'm not sure in your neighborhood or what that event was, but, I mean, they're actively doing it, so. Uh, may not be in your neighborhood, but, um, I had pictures of when they were there to do it, and it was a, something that we noted, uh, beef up the storm sewer there, so it flooded less, so. It's the goal of the project.
And then we're getting new water lines from where? From the street to the?
Yep, to the property line. So your private services in the city of Casson, you're responsible from, um, the main out in the street, all the way through your, into your house. Uh, we are going to replace the mains, um, in the street, and then we're going to replace your water and sewer services, um, to the property line. And driveway, burns, curb and gutter, um, essentially everything that's in the public right-of-way.
Okay. And I, I went through this, I was, uh, part of the second, third, and fourth ave Northwest reconstruction, which took two, three years. It took forever. But we, we went through this, we had the assessment. Um, it, it has made a big difference in water quality, because I'm in the, the old part of town too. It's made a big difference in water quality. It's made a big difference in terms of water not pooling on the street and being able to drain down those, those sewer, storm sewers, because now we have them. And also, the, um, the, what's the proper term? The one that comes in behind the curb and gutter for the?
Subdrain.
The subdrain system, you can have your sump pump hooked up to it so that the water is no longer collecting in your yard. It's going into the storm drain that's out at the curb.
And then we get charged for that, though?
It's part of the project cost. You don't get charged like any additional costs.
Well, no, but we're getting, we're getting charged for it, because we have to pay for it, because it's already in here.
Yes, but I think, are you asking if there is, if you will be charged to, so say you have a hose that comes out of the house, and you've presently got it just going over the curb or into the area behind the curb, um, how does that get connected?
Uh, that would be on the private side. So again, we're going to have a subdrain service, so it's going to be four feet deep behind the back of the curb. If you have a sump pump discharge, you can hook that discharge into that subdrain. So now he's helping drain the road, keep it, the road dry and keep frost heave out. Uh, it's also there to pick up the sump pumps, so they're not pumped to the street anymore. Uh, they can go right in that pipe, and they stay in the storm sewer and go to the pond, hopefully Mastin Creek, so. Um, if you mind, uh, one of the items that Ian's got pulled open there is, and I glossed over, I didn't mention it. Um, of the total project cost, um, the amount that's being proposed assessed is at 803,000. That's 14% of the project. Um, so the city as a whole, all the other citizens are paying the, uh, remaining 80, 80, uh, what is it, 86% of the project. So, uh, what's being assessed is kind of a small portion of the total project that's, uh, being proposed.
So going back, so is my, the amount of money I pay for my sewer on my, my utility bill, is that going to go up then? Because my sump's going to be draining into the subdrains?
Not due to this project, no.
No, there's no, there's no special fee to have a subdrain service in the city of Casson.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
What do I have to say?
Your name and address.
Uh, Brendan Hertanek, 79 Third Avenue, Southwest. Um, it came late. What is exactly being done in the area? I know I heard water mains.
Yeah, it's going to be high-level, um.
Gas.
Would you like me to give a high-level?
Yes, please.
So.
Sorry.
No, you're good. Uh, so basically reconstructing the entire neighborhood, starting over with brand-new sewer, brand-new water. Um, more storm sewer, storm sewer essential at every intersection.
Spot right there.
Full reconstruction, um, and then we're going to add subdrain services, which is a drain tile behind the back of the curb that's stubbed to your property. Um, and then, if you have a sump pump, you can hook that in there, so it doesn't have to go to the ground, doesn't have to, um, go to the street, nice up the street, so we can keep that underground. Um, and then full, uh, build out a reconstruction of the roadway. And then we are going to perpetuate the sidewalk along the west side of Second Avenue from Old 14 to the south end there, so on the right-hand side of the, the page, so. Um, and then.
Oh, yep.
Valley gutters that everybody loves to drive over, um, at the intersections are all going to go away. Uh, we'll have storm sewer catch basins there to drain it. Um, the city council's proposing to special assess you as a property owner. If you're a purple lot there, uh, $9,030 is part of the project.
Yep.
Which is 15% of the project cost, so.
And explain to me how the, the interest works. So if I pay, you know, over the course of 15 years, you know, I pay, what is it, 400? I, I didn't do the math, but.
Was it $4,000 over 15 years?
Well, I mean, so, you know, it's, if you just, let's just say you let it, you let it go.
As long as it's before the November.
Yeah, if you pay it all off, there's no interest at all. If you, if you let it go over 15 years, it's about, it's a little over $600 a year that's added on to your property tax statement.
After that 15 years.
Uh, no, just like, eh, over the 15-year period. So like, so if, eh, to Brandon's point, like, if I have an assessment, I pay it all off, then it's, it's just done. It doesn't, it's done. If you, if you let it go on the assessment roll, or like go on to the taxes, it's a little over $600 a year with a principal and interest on the assessment for 15 years.
So every year?
That's what you'd pay in addition to like your normal property tax. If your normal property taxes were 3,000, then that would go on, and you'd pay it for that period. That's what you'd pay in addition to like your normal property taxes. If your normal property taxes were three thousand, then that would go on, and you'd pay it for that period of time over fifteen years. So it's, in essence, it's like a fifteen-year loan.
So if I paid it off right of way, no interest obviously, but if I just paid it off incrementally, I would, I would accrue interest.
Yeah, and it would be part of that. It would work into your payment as you went along with fifteen. So you wouldn't see like a special interest. The county, they amortize it all over that period of time, and they take the interest account, and then they spread it out on payments, on tax statements.
So you could go in there and pay it a couple of years from now, come in and pay your remainder too. You can go to the county and pay it off too.
But it'd still accrue interest?
No, because it'd be gone. So it would not, no longer accrue interest, because you'd have a payoff. Just like any other bank loan, right? If you went to the bank and paid the loan off.
Okay.
I mean, you did mention deferrals too, for, for, you know, for folks who have low income guidelines, or for folks who are over sixty-five, there is a senior deferment, which means that you don't have to pay on it until the property would be sold or transacted. So that, you know, if people have questions on that, that's another item to keep in track, so.
Well, my wife is concerned, because I don't wanna accrue any interest, and I'd rather just pay it off.
And you also, I think you started mentioning electrical and natural gas, so it's likely that the natural gas company will replace their lines as well during this project. We typically see them do quite a bit of work.
Yeah.
Same thing for the electric department. They're gonna be replacing a lot of the-
While the road's open, right.
A lot of the infrastructure, the assessments, this process isn't gonna, they're gonna be paying for that separately. We don't, we don't own a natural gas company or anything like that. That's through their company, but, so I mean, you probably will see the, the infrastructure there being replaced as well, most likely.
I think the natural gas company has been out in the neighborhood.
True.
Yeah, I saw, um, locator, he said they were locating gas, so that's why I was asking. But that has nothing to do with you.
No, they just like to come in and make it new as long as everything else can be new, so.
Okay.
We work around their gas lines, so they like to make it all new and plastic, so.
Sure.
We're not gonna have any gas leaks during construction, knock on wood. We don't rip one out, but it's just easy to work around, so.
Did you find any lead pipes?
Uh, we're gonna find out. I think one property owner reported lead. I gotta, I gotta look into that a little bit more. We haven't, I don't know if we have in our timeline. Like Charlie, Public Works Director, mentioned, he thinks they're all gone, but there's been a couple that have self-reported that.
An old area.
Yep. If we do find lead, we're actually required to notify the property owner, so we'll notify you. And then you may have self-reported your, we sent you a mailing about reporting. It's a big push at a federal level to replace.
On my side, right?
What's that?
On my side. Yeah, not the mains, but the, yeah.
Yeah, well, mains also, we're gonna do that, and we'll, we'll obviously install right to the property line. And if there's a lead line, we'll notify you, and there's some potential funding available, but there's-
It won't be a main, though. It'll be a service line, like you said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, no upgrades over by my area, really, for like sidewalks or anything. Five oh nine right on the corner there.
We have it proposed, and you can see it on the map there on Second Avenue.
Second Avenue, yeah. So you can see the sidewalk. So that'll be updated.
Yep, that'll be a four-place on that sidewalk along Second Avenue, the west side of the road from, again.
Yeah.
County thirty-four.
Sure.
And then we were adding one block to connect into Casey's. I think that was at, I'd have to look, Second Avenue, I believe. And that would be to connect in to get you out to fifty-seven.
Yeah, I'm glad you guys are fixing that water problem over there. That kinda pooled up. That was kinda getting bad, so.
Yep.
I don't think I have anything else, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Ron Carlson. I have a property at three oh seven Manorville Avenue, and I'm assuming the assessments were lowered because the bids came in lower, Brendan?
That's correct.
Did you have a lot of people bid on something like that? I'm just curious. How close were they? Pretty competitive?
Ten bidders.
Ten?
Yep.
Wow. Along Fourth Street would be on the south side of my property, Brendan. Will there be a sidewalk there?
Nope.
Nope? Okay.
Right along there.
Nope. I mean, it'll be on the south side, cooking into Casey's, right?
Nope, we're coming on the south side of, I gotta look, south side of Fourth Street or Fifth Street. It's only to the west. It'll only be to the west that's connected in.
I mean, you're collecting it along Fourth, I think.
It's Fifth. I'll double check when we, I'll come back to that.
Okay.
So it was no?
You don't have anything on your property, don't have any sidewalks, no?
Correct. We're not, not on Ron's property, no.
Just so I can get back to my tenant, what is the plan for access to my driveway when the construction starts?
Again, we'll have to work through that. April eighth at six o'clock, we're gonna have a public open house. You're gonna get a notification and a point of contact during construction. So we'll have to work through it like any other reconstruct, and it's gonna be difficult by only having one access, so.
You're looking at phasing it though, Brendan, right?
Yeah, we do have a phasing plan. The, Ron specifically, they're gonna start literally right in front of your place of business there with the sanitary sewer, so we'll just have to work through it. The contractor is gonna be required if they start working on your block and your little area. We have the project kinda parceled out. If they start in that area, they have to continually work there, meaning get the water, get the sewer done, get the storm sewer done, subcut the road, get a gravel road, back to gravel base before they can leave that area. So you just can't go willy-nilly across town. They talked about two crews. We'll see how that'll shake out here. We do have a pre-construction meeting actually tomorrow with the contractor. So yeah, it's gonna be a mess, but once they start working, we'll get you at least a gravel road, and then it'll kinda be opened back up until the concrete comes. Don't have to shut, kind of it back down driveway access when concrete's gotta cure out, so.
Sure. And the city has probably gone to different institutions and bonded for this money?
Uh, maybe.
I mean, we'll likely be bonding later in this year. We'll be accessing the debt mark as a part of the loan.
So you haven't got your bond figures back yet?
No, we haven't gotten those back yet, no.
'Cause I, I just, looking at bonds and stuff, you know, they pay between three and four percent roughly. And is that what you'll be charging the citizens, the same amount you pay for your bonds?
Four percent plus one point five.
What's the one point five?
Um, that's the set rate. We reduced it from nine down to five point five.
But, no, but I'm just saying, when you bond for your money, will that be five percent, or will you?
I don't know what the bond rate will be until we issue the bond, but the rate that the council's proposing tonight is five point five percent on the assessments for the interest rate.
Okay, okay. I, I guess just my final comment is, I don't like paying for something that I don't, I don't own, and I have no say in it. It just, I can't think of anything else that you pay money for that you, I don't know, you, you don't own it or control it. And I guess that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Alex Hensing. I'm at one oh six Fifth Street. This is the first assessment project that I've gone through. I got a lot of questions, but I don't wanna sit here till nine o'clock. Who's the best contact to direct them to as questions come up, or?
I mean, if it's, if it's based on the construction, Brandon Theobald's our city engineer, he's probably the best person. If there's a question about something else, you can certainly contact the City Hall here.
Okay. A suggestion, since there seems to be a lot of confusion about the interests, would an amortization schedule provided to everybody make a lot of sense? So it kinda clears that up. If you would simply not make a payment, or not, not prepay?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we could certainly generate something. Typically, the county does that amortization schedule when they have the assessment, but I mean, I can take a look and see if we can figure out something. If somebody decides not to pay at all, and what they'd like to know what their payments are based on.
Yeah, okay.
One thing I wanted to note, just for everyone here, you know, if you sign up, if you put your email down, it's easier for us to correspond, and we can give out construction updates too. So, you know, like, for example, like, if you'd like something, what's the email, best email to contact you at?
Uh, it's kinda long and complicated, but I-
Well, if you can, if you can write it down or provide it to us, then we can, we can correspond with you easier that way, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Seabright, four oh six Third Avenue Southwest. Only question I got, I guess, is they're putting gas lines across the street, and I talked to the guy, and he said that it's going on the west side, and then he said they're running lines to our houses underneath the street, and it's at whatever you said, Flex Hoes or whatever. Why would you be putting that in now? Are you not gonna be digging up the street and taking out the old sewers and putting them in bigger sewers?
Yeah, so we're coordinating with the gas company, assuming the project moves forward on their location, so it's not in conflict with our, with our stuff, mainly our storm sewer, because they're not as deep as what we are with our water main or sanitary sewer. So we've coordinated those locations. So either, if they didn't replace them, we'd say dig a storm sewer, we'd be maybe hitting it, or it'd be older line, it would fall apart, we'd experience a lot of gas leaks. So they like to come in, put new plastic line in before the project, get them all in, and avoid us, right in ground and space, to get them in there, and we'll just work, work around them and dig, dig over the top of them. It's just today, so we either gotta deal with the old stuff or deal with the new stuff. We prefer to deal with the new stuff, so.
Well, I guess my point is, if you're doing a lot of digging in there, what's the chance of nicking a plastic line versus an old steel line?
The plastic is a lot easier to deal with, so contractors work around utilities all the time. There's fiber optic, and there's a monster fiber optic duct running down Second that we've coordinated with too, so we're gonna be relocating that during construction, so.
That, and I guess my other question would be, is the purpose to put in bigger sewer lines to, so it drains better?
Uh, sanitary sewer or storm sewer? Um, sanitary, I'll answer both. Sanitary sewer, we are looking at, we're gonna put obviously plastic line in as opposed to the old clay, so the sanitary sewer will drain a lot better. And we do actually have the main trunk line in there. We're increasing it from an eight to a twelve inch. And then we're gonna have larger water main too to meet fire flow.
So is the actual storm sewers, aren't they?
I'm sorry, I didn't answer storm. Yeah, so now everything drains from the south side of that sheet to the north, and then sits in the ladies' yard. There's like four catch basins. We probably have, we probably have thirty-some catch basins as part of the project. So obviously more catch basins, get that water in the pipes, and then we're gonna pipe it due west to the creek. So we're gonna get that water out of the neighborhood, so it doesn't flood as much as it does.
Yeah, last time, twenty nineteen, when we had all that rain, water was, the ground was so saturated, it was coming through the cracks and the curbs and coming up through our drains, and my, I guess my question is, is the drains, or the, um, some, some people said they actually had sewer water coming back, and actually our toilet started bubbling, but it never overflowed. But one of the other neighbors said that they had crossed the street, that they had it spraying out of their toilet.
That does not surprise me. Since two thousand nineteen, the City Council has had a very large effort to reduce the amount of I N I, which is sanitary, I'm sorry, rain and groundwater getting into the sanitary sewer, not only in this neighborhood, but other neighborhoods, made some investments, and actually, I'm knock on wood, again, it wasn't very dry seasons. Public Works has reported that the flows of the treatment plant are at a historic low, just due to helping contain that ground and rainwater. And again, we mentioned the sump pump discharges. We do have that line now to get that water out of your house. Say, if you were to put a sump pump in or have a sump pump to get that pipe directly to a subdrain that'll drain to the creek.
Another thing to do would be a backflow preventer. That'd be a good time to put those in as well, if you already have it.
So what Mr. Seabright mentioned was backflow preventer. So if the sewer main does come up, some houses that have been historically probably more sewer backups in this area, specifically north side of the road tracks, is kind of, you go east out of town, the old railroad truss there. They backed up pretty heavily in two thousand nineteen and historically have. They've actually put a fair amount of backflow preventers at their property lines, so that's an option too for, for citizens to do.
Well, it used to be when they had the park where Shopka was, that was kind of a lowland and served as the flooding grounds, and now, in twenty nineteen, it all got pushed down to that corner on, I think it would be, what, Fifth Street and Third Avenue where that, um, three, I think it's duplex or townhomes are or whatever.
Yep. Yeah.
And the water was right up to their backyards, and, and the whole corner was flooded, and.
Nineteen was a big one, and they are right up against the flood plain. So in addition to this project, I don't know if you heard much about the city news, we also went to the state and got a state bonding bill two years ago. And part of that bonding bill, we got five million dollars to build a flood control structure upstream of town, on the west side of Highway fourteen, as you go to like the Dodge Center Airport, to build a, a pretty large flood control structure, think embankment with a pipe to slow that water down and fill up the embankment as opposed to filling up the town. So our goal as part of that project is reduce the flood elevation up to two feet through town, and that's a pretty significant reduction when it comes to talking about flood control.
So that little creek won't get to be a lake again?
Hopefully not.
Amazing how that, it's a puddle in the summer, and that, that, well, a couple, three times, it's been a lake.
Yep. So we're hoping to make a bigger lake farther upstream before it gets to town. So that's, that's the goal of the project. So we do, we have secured that funding. We're still working on it. We got a lot of work to do to get all the stuff and permitting all sorted out, so.
Um, the storm sewers you're putting in, are they like big ceramic storm sewers, or?
Yep, R C P pipe, twelve-inch or larger diameter, so.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I had. Thanks.
And April eighth, six o'clock, we'll have an open house. I'll have a couple of our engineers here to talk about the project, talk about access, talk about whatever, so. Happy to talk about the, the actual gory details of construction at that time and how everything's gonna work out, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening.
Adam Hayman, four oh five First Avenue Southwest. Is the, I don't, is the start of construction gonna happen before the, because it says early spring. I kinda feel like we're in early spring.
It won't happen before April eighth, no.
Okay.
But it could happen shortly thereafter, April eighth.
Okay.
Um, assuming we were to contract tonight, the lowest bidder was S L Contracting, that worked on our third, fourth, and fifth project, and they were a local construction firm that's jumping in to bid to get going, so.
Okay.
Assuming we're to go tonight, it'll happen shortly after April eighth.
And then just one quick thing, I don't, so if, if we have any requests for changes, do we just write something in?
Request for changes of the assessment?
So I think, I'm the property that you guys are trying to put the sidewalk in.
Um.
Straight west of Casey's.
Come April eighth, and we can, we can talk about it. Okay.
Well, I know this isn't the construction meeting, but.
Yeah, how about, are you coming April eighth? How we can talk about it then?
Yes, yeah.
We're a long time from pouring concrete, so.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to get my arms around a little more and see what we did, but.
Okay.
So.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. That's what I was wondering too.
Loretta near one oh three Sixth Street Southwest. We've had a problem off and on with tree roots growing into our septic system.
Septic system, the pipes, the sanitary system, whatever.
Sewer service, yeah.
Okay. Um, will whatever you use to replace that, will that prevent tree roots from growing into it? Because we've had to rent auger and clean out, but our only warning is when it does what it wants to do in the house.
Um, so what we're doing, we're placing the main out in the center of the street, and then we're replacing your service up to the right-of-way line. So the right-of-way line's gonna be some feet, you know, like I think where a sidewalk would be at that point, and then we're connecting into whatever you have there. So if you have a monster boulevard tree that's sitting over top of your sanitary sewer on the right-of-way, we'll be removing that to put your sewer service in. If it's back on your private property, we're not removing that tree, you may still have a problem. So I recommend you to look at it, and then maybe consider removing the tree and, and replacing the sanitary sewer from where we ended into the house privately.
Do you have a particular product that you would recommend?
Yeah, it would just be plastic PVC pipe, and it's plastic sewer pipe, so.
Okay, plastic.
That's probably clay, or orangeberg.
What'd you say?
Orangeberg?
That's it, yeah.
Okay. Orangeberg is, recommend everybody replace all their services if it's orangeberg. So we'll know during excavation, again, we'll have a, we'll have a person of contact there, and we'll, if you got orangeberg, they'll let you know. But we're not gonna likely go on private property. You could potentially, I don't know what the contractor's answer to this is, potentially, they may be interested in doing private work for citizens, but that's something we can talk about on the eighth or reach out to S L Contracting.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening, Council. Johann Marsland, seven oh three South Fork Place.
I don't have a property directly affected by this, uh, improvement, uh, but I do want to speak to it just briefly. Uh, I first wanted to begin by thanking the council for its hard work to reduce the cost to our citizens. Uh, I know that, uh, having attended these meetings, that, uh, you have reduced the interest costs that would have been paid by a citizen financing this by about $3,200, uh, by reducing from a nine percent interest down to a 5.5. I've also seen you work hard to balance the issues between, uh, having all the citizens pay for, uh, the project costs and having the local citizens affected pay a portion of it. Uh, knowing that it saves our citizens, uh, all the citizens money by, uh, having, uh, the local citizens assessed makes bonding easier and saves the city money. Uh, I recognize this is a difficult balancing act. I would like to share just briefly, and I'll keep my comments to less than three minutes, uh, my own experience with the assessment process. So our property, uh, at 205 Mandeville Avenue was assessed along with our parsonage. Uh, at the time, the assessment for the, that property, uh, for the parsonage property, uh, worked out to be about 12% of the property's value, uh, and all we got was a new sewer and a curb, and it was very nice, but it was a big hit for us. And also, uh, the assessment had we paid it all at once, would have represented, uh, 25% of our annual budget for the whole organization. So it was a big hit. I'm glad to hear that, uh, we have some means by which citizens of very low income can have this, uh, assessed to their taxes without having to pay on it. Uh, I would also encourage the council to have, uh, means by which, uh, property owners who maybe fall on the line of that, or, uh, like ourselves, uh, we're a nonprofit, uh, who doesn't make a lot, have a way to mitigate some of these costs as well. I think it would also be helpful to continue to, uh, spread the load of these costs down to the bare minimum that would save the city money and its bonding. Uh, it's easier to take a smaller hit than it is to take a big one, and $9,000 is not a big hit for some people, uh, for others, it represents a significant portion of their income. So the lowest we can make this over time, I would recommend that we do. And as somebody who was hit by one of the bigger assessments, we were assessed by foot, not by residential unit, I would be very happy to pay a small amount that others don't get that same hit. So, thank you, Council.
Thank you. Is that anybody else? Do the written in this part? Okay, here and no more, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you, um, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you like, um, otherwise, thank you and have a good night, and thank you for your input. Next up will be a resolution for adoption of assessments.
Yeah, so, um, you heard the public comments, um, Council, um, now is the time to consider a resolution, um, to adopt the assessments. Uh, in addition to that, there is, um, a resolution in your council packet, um, to award a construction contract, so presumably, um, the council would probably want us to handle those kind of at the same time if we're moving forward with the, with the project and the assessment, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody got any questions for Brandon?
Um, yeah, just one quick one, Brandon, I know you said we worked with S and L before, you don't have, you were happy with their, were happy with their work?
Yeah, um, you as a council, um, have to accept the lowest responsible, uh, public bidders, the public bidding environment, we didn't do a best value sort of thing that we could have gone down that road, uh, we haven't traditionally, um, so yeah, they are a contractor that we worked in the past, um, did the third, fourth, and fifth job, which was a bigger project than this one, so, um, recommending them for approval.
Any other questions?
Open one motion? It's up to you.
Brian, I will say the streets that they did in our neighborhood are still in great shape, and it's been six years.
Yeah, okay, I'm here. Can we do them separately?
Yeah, we can do them separate, yes. So, I would look for a motion to approve the resolution adopting assessments for the Southwest.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mel, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, thank you. Oh, we have one opposed. You get that, okay. I was a little fast, sorry.
Sorry.
And then we'd look at a resolution to award the project to, for the Southwest Caston Reconstruction to S and L Contracting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Brian, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mel, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Thank you.
You just, if I could, Mayor, so there was no written submitted objections?
I have none.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we have that on the record, so thank you.
All right, up next, there's no committee report, old business, the D E, the D E R S interconnect agreements and code generation schedules.
Um, so just including your packet, now you've got a couple items, um, D, the D E R S is, uh, it's distributed energy resources, so basically it's the solar accounts. Uh, Councilman Johnson requested just taking a look at that, it is something that we typically take a look at once a year, so good opportunity to take a look at that and, and review that. I know he had a few questions, and I've tried to answer some of those, you know, electronically with email. Um, with our rate study, that'll be finalized this year, we received that preliminary draft back in early March, council will recall. With that being finalized, there will be a recalculation of the, um, the grid access charge, we do that every time we have that, it's based on infrastructure costs, things like that. Uh, the other thing that'll be, um, will change each year is the reimbursement rate that folks get, it's based on our rate class, so if it's a commercial account, it gets the commercial reimbursement, if it's a residential account, it gets the residential reimbursement, and that changes each year when our tariff, you know, our electric rate changes slightly each year, so the reimbursement would change each year. So, um, you know, if folks have questions, I'm glad to try and answer those tonight. Um, basically, we follow the state statutes and the P U C's rules, a lot of this language is boilerplate, um, we don't have a lot of control over the state policies. I did note, um, that the state is looking at changing the net metering rules, and so right now what happens is, uh, someone generates with a solar account and we're, you know, we're required to buy that back 100% of it. The change the state is looking at is that we would be required to buy 100% of their usage at the retail rate, so for example, if you use 700 kilowatts a month, you know, a regular residential home uses something like that, and you generate 1,000, right now we pay you the retail rate for the 700 you use, plus the 300 that you generate in excess, so you know, you're getting your 12 cents or whatever per, you know, for those 300. The, the change the state's looking at is that they would, uh, have it so that the reimbursement for retail would only be at the amount of usage. So for example, if you use 700, we would pay you retail at 700, the other 300 would be paid at the wholesale rate, which is the cost of what the city pays for wholesale power. So a lot of municipals, um, a lot of the co-ops are really pushing very hard on that, so that's a possible change.
That, just to be clear, that's, that's a good thing for us as a city, right, meaning we pay a little bit less?
It would be beneficial, I mean, to be honest with you, if I could buy wholesale, I would love it if everybody had solar in their house, because I'd much rather have it sourced here than be buying from somewhere else. So, I mean, I need to get some questions about that, like, in, in theory, that's a great way to do it, because it's beneficial for us and it's beneficial for the homeowner. Right now, when we're paying retail, it's sort of a penalty for the folks that don't, because it ends up meaning that the rate has to be a little higher and the non-solar users are subsidizing it slightly.
Right, okay, that's what I thought.
But anyway, um, yeah, so any questions, anybody has on any of those?
I'd just like to say is that I think you guys all saw the email that came in, right? It was sent to all of us, so that's kind of what initiated this, um, discussion, and I believe Tim alleviated the citizens' concerns and stuff, so I don't know if he's going to go forward with the project or not, but, um, after going through this, the one thing that I think Tim, after our, our email discussion is, I'm still not clear on, and maybe the rate study will help, is why, um, the grid access charge changes with, um, the size. Like, to me, that's, I don't really understand that, why that is, and we can wait to maybe discuss that when we have the report.
Sure, I mean, I would say, you know, the larger the size is, the more impact it's going to have on the grid, so the larger transformers, we're going to have to have to handle that backfeeding into the system.
And the wires and...
Right, but I'm going to, what I'm going to say is, is that unless they have a different service line to their house, we've already sized it to send them that much power if they can't send back more than the same amount, right? If they got 150 amp service line, we can't send them more than 150 amps, they can't send us more than 150 amps. The line's already there, it doesn't matter which way it's going in my head, so.
And I will say, I'm not an electrical engineer, I'm not technical on that side of it, so, um, you know, we certainly can look at that rate study when it comes back out and finalizes. The other thing is, you know, I can get Jared in here and he might be able to explain it better.
Maybe somebody from the electrical department can tell me what I don't understand.
No, it sounds good.
I think it would probably be a good thing to have Jared come in and explain it, because as more people are switching to solar or adding solar...
Sure.
These questions are going to come up more and more.
Oh, and I know Jared would be, he'd be glad to come and talk about that. I mean, that particular customer, um, constructed their house with electric only, which has led to some issues for them, because of their consumption has been substantial, um, and there are some things where, um, going forward, I think that, um, I've seen some rate studies where they're, they're going to demand rates for, for residential as well as business, because right now we do demand rates for commercial, we don't do demand rates for residential. If you did demand rates for, um, residential, you'd be able to eliminate those grid access charges, because it would be showing, you know, that would be, the wear and tear on the system basically is that demand, like the highs and lows, you know, right now the individuals are paying for it. If you did a demand charge across the city, it would, it would alleviate some of those concerns you bring up, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know if this is in our discussion before, but in regards to the demand for residential, I'm not, I'm not so sure on that, because the way our rate schedule is, is we, we incentivize people to go all electric by giving them a lower rate, so then now people are going all electric and realizing that...
The rate change, there's no difference in rates between all electric and regular?
Not this year?
No, no.
There was prior though?
Yeah, there was, yeah.
So until recently...
Eliminated that, that's right.
Until recently, we were, we were encouraging people to go all electric, so to now flip the script on them and be like, all right, now you're all electric and unsurprisingly, to some people, like, your heating, your electric bill's really high in the winter when you got to heat your house with electric, to then turn around and be like, all right, now we got to charge you extra because you did that, I don't know, I think that's something we might need to tread a little carefully on.
I mean, we aren't charging anyone extra for doing that, but we are charging them, like, for the grid access charges, so they have a solar account.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, so you're right, I mean, we haven't implemented demand, and I know all we will, but it's something that would act...
When it comes to the demand discussion, I think we need to be a little careful about implementing demand.
Well, I believe you're being very careful, and we probably didn't implement it with this rate study, but in five years, like, R P U is implementing those demand rates right now, some of the bigger utilities are, so it is something that we'll keep an eye on, for sure.
Yep, understood, thank you.
You bet.
All right. Thank you. Um, under old business, G2 mowing bids for 2025.
So you've got those in your packet there, um, and Charlie and I reviewed those, and we're recommending to go with, uh, Rower Enterprises LLC, um, Council had advised us that the contractor, they wanted to make a change from last year, so that's, uh, that's why we're going with that, that bidder.
And they've been informed of the cemetery expectations?
Yeah, and that is the big sticking point, is always the cemetery, so that is the one that we'll, you know, we've made sure to stress that with them and to talk about it. They have a bigger crew than the vendor we had last year, so we, we do think that they have a more ability to, to be able to handle it better.
We need...
I would look for a motion to approve that.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? If not, I would take a motion to approve Rowers Enterprise LLC for the mowing bid for 2025.
I just want to clarify, because we had discussion about what we were going to include in the mowing bid, did we just include everything we did last year, it's exactly the same? We didn't cut anything out?
The R F P was modified slightly, because the, there's some acreages that we're going to be doing a little bit differently, but it's very close to what it was last year.
Okay, so this does include the cemetery and all the same things as last year?
Yeah, there's only a few little strips that the Public Works is probably going to handle, some of the roadside stuff that just, it doesn't get done necessarily all the time anyways. A good example would be along 57, where the crickcross is there, we end up just mowing that little strip a lot of times, so.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the...
Rower Enterprises?
Rower Enterprises as the, uh, mowing contractor.
We have a motion, do, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose, thank you. Up next, new business, the review of park dedication fees information.
So it includes your packet, I've submitted some information, um, from the folks that we partner with at, uh, Heisington Coigler, they've done a survey, and it's a little older, but I know there was a request to start taking a look at that, and by no means are we done. I just wanted to indicate, you can see on here that lots of cities do it in lots of different ways, and I think that if, if the council opts to go for a per-unit, uh, fee, I think that would be something that we certainly could implement, and it would not be overly difficult, um, but we would have to determine what that best value is, and that would require some additional study time from Heisington based on what our park needs are. The goal is to try and match those park costs to the park dedication fees as much as you can, so there's a good reasoning behind why are you charging what you're charging. Um, so I just want to share this with you, kind of as information tonight, um, let you know that we are working on it, we're looking at it, and that there are a lot of variations throughout the state of Minnesota on what people, uh, charge for those park fees.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is administrators' report, we got the finance report.
Sure, so first off, just going to highlight a few things, um, you, if you recall, last year, there was a lot of talk about the missing middle housing.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of those legislative bills have come back, and I highlight those in my report, um, and overall, I mentioned, you know, some of legislation seems good to me and some of it does not. Part of the reason is I, I don't necessarily like the one-size-fits-all legislation where you're lumping the greater Minnesota in with the metro, but I do see, you know, where, where there's some pluses to it, and Ian and I have talked about it, um, you know, with the, the changes that were required for us with our code, if these legislative, uh, bodies, and there's I think five or six of them here, if they're implemented, we would have to change the city code, because it would reduce the lot size, um, from our current minimums to a smaller minimum, which, you know, has pluses and minuses. As you know, um, sometimes the, the public is not as, as interested in that smaller lot size in their neighborhood either. So, um, anyways, I'm following that, I suspect a lot of this stuff is probably going to get passed. Last year it was very, very, uh, it got pulled right at the end, I think this year with the divided, seems like EMS, housing are the, the two things, you know, and there are only two more things to get approved this year. Uh, Park and Rec, um, they talked about a lot of different things, one is implementing that, um, that, um, handicap swing or the, the swing for multi-able people at Veterans Park, uh, we're looking forward at an option that's going to be less costly than the one they had been previously looking at, it's very similar to the one in Byron's East Park, so if you get over to Byron and you look at their swing there, it's going to be very similar to that. Um, you already approved the, the, uh, the folks for staffing, we have good staff level this year for the Caston Aquatic Center, so we're, we're happy about that, we had a lot of, uh, young people who are, are joining us again this year, it's a good place to work for them. We are looking at being open that Memorial Day weekend, we'll be doing swimming, uh, training for the staff the week before that, hopefully open that weekend, and then we would open again, uh, full-time on the 7th. School goes a little bit later this year than it did last year, so that, I think that's a Saturday, and then we're looking at ending on the 17th of August. So that website, the MyRec website should be open, I think, probably later this, maybe this next week, I think they're planning on having it open for folks to start getting passes and things like that. Um, talked about the distributed energy, I shared that lead testing line, Brandon mentioned it a little bit, there's still a lot of information coming out about that and how it's going to be implemented. I think there's about 30 folks in town here that self-reported that they had some kind of a lead or some other kind of connection, and we have yet to see one of those, myself, um, but we have seen some cast, so some of that stuff is, is going to keep coming out. Um, just a couple other things I've got in there, um, dealing with things, I won't go into that. And then I wanted to share the finance report, and I appreciate Sarah's here, she's been working very hard on getting things ready for the audit, it takes, uh, every day we learn something a little new, and we unpack a little bit of some things that were, uh, not understood as well, so it's, uh, going to be a very good process, it's been very So it's gonna be a very good process, it's been very good for us, and I think, and we're still looking forward to that presentation of this year's audit in May. So other than that, the League of Minnesota Cities is available there, so if you're interested, please let us know. I know I have a couple who reach out to me. The sessions, a couple, some of them look interesting, some of them, maybe less so, more metro-centric, but I know this year, it's, it's certainly up for the council if they're interested to go. So that's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you, Tim. Up next is our engineers' report.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. In your council packet, reconstruction plans for the 2025 Street Utility Improvement Project. Ian, do you mind pulling the document up? We will walk through the plan. We'll keep it pretty high level for us, but then ultimately, there's a resolution to approve plans and advertise the project, so J1 there. Ian, down one. Young eyes over there, you should be able to see it, right there. Perfect. So this is a PDF of the construction plan. It is also in your council packet, so you can kind of follow along. I'll start right on the title sheet, sheet number one there, lower left-hand corner. You can see the project areas, this is kind of our catch-all projects, so we had some projects that were kind of on our list of things to do, so we're kind of putting them all together, making it into one project to be efficient with engineering time and dollars and bidding process and whatnot. So I'll start downtown, we have it broken up into schedules, because we are looking at assessing part of these projects and other projects, we have other funding mechanisms, so we are kind of broken up into schedules. But downtown, Schedule A, including paving behind the Legion down the city-owned lot along the railroad tracks there, from Third Avenue to Second Avenue, and then replacing Second Avenue and Third Avenue, adding some storm sewer in Lake Caston, as it's been called in public meetings, and then creating the bumpouts at Second Avenue in West Main to make those permanent with concrete and asphalt, and moving some light poles so we can get some more compliance at that bumpout there. Schedule B is 8th Street Northwest. That's been very problematic from a water main standpoint. Ian, if you want to start on the sheet, go to sheet 28. Schedule B is a water main replacement on 8th Street Northwest from 8th Avenue over to 12th Avenue. It's been very problematic from a water main perspective. And then Schedule D is funding, we got some DNR funding, was it $150,000 or $250,000 from the DNR to provide some trails? So we have one, we're calling it Prairie View Trail, up in Prairie View Park, up in, along Parkview to connect to the north. And then Mr. Bigelow, as part of his subdivisions, is going to install some trails up to the future 16th Street. So ultimately, you're going to be able to get to 16th Street when we get all these trails built through development, through this funding we got through the DNR. And then along the south side, our parking ride, connecting in on 8th Street Southwest from kind of the end of Highway 57 on the south side, on the north side of 8th Street to get to the entrance to Windsor Court. That was in our safety also school planning that we did with the school some years ago. We see a ton of kids walking underneath Highway 14 on the shoulders, so we figured we'd get them a, get them a sidewalk to 57, and then where one council direction that you guys had at the workshop was to have me work on funding and get them from, along 57 underneath Highway 14. So we got our ears to the ground on any funding there, so that would be a long-term goal. So Ian's got on page 28, that's kind of when things start. Again, we'll keep it high level. If anybody has any questions, jump in, everything before, sheet 28's just kind of details, and they're all kind of standard stuff, and I'll summarize any high-level stuff here. So again, this is Second and Third Avenue being replaced from the railroad to Main Street. We are ultimately looking at getting a better sidewalk to the railroad. We got a railroad permit in, so we're waiting on them, so we are looking at doing that as part of the project, and I'll just keep jumping. Sheet 29 there, shows the bumpouts. Ian's got it pulled open there, so that again is at Main Street and Second Avenue Northwest. That's where put those temporary, temporary, well, it's part of 57, a temporary stop, stop signs, to make it a four-way stop, which turned into some planters, which is now turned into a permanent bumpout. We are not bumping out on Second Avenue, we do have some larger truck traffic here. The idea is to bump just on Main Street so larger vehicles can still make the turn, and then ultimately, kind of sucked in that curbing gutter on Main Street to have a narrow, narrow kind of crossing there. That width was kind of discussed at the staff level, that is the same width of Highway 57 and the Hubble House, just to give you a perspective of what that bumpout and what that width of the concrete would be there. Black is asphalt, and you can see the new concrete, and then the pink is new storm sewers. We kind of moved some catch bases around to make sure the road drains. So those are the bumpouts there. We are, we'll be moving the, it's kind of hard to see there, but in red, moving some of those light pole bases into the bumpouts to have some vertical elements at that bumpout to help with traffic, they slow down when you have the vertical elements next to them as they come to an intersection, and then we'll work our stop signs out there so they can see them and not have to look around cars that are diagonal parked. So that's what we have there. Kind of, we talked, we were going to match the streetlights that we have. I think Public Works staff is like, we're going to likely relocate the bases as part of this project, and then the electric group is going to order the poles throughout Main Street and replace not only these, but the ones as directed previously by council. So that's kind of the highlight there. I'm gonna keep moving on to sheet 30, that's 8th Street Northwest. You did see this in the feasibility report, so we're proposing to assess that, but we are replacing just the water main system, the sewer's in pretty good shape. And then we're replacing some concrete curbing gutter, and then redoing that road along that corridor. So that's 8th Street. Jump into sheet 33 there. Sheet 33, you can see the parking lot that's being paved behind the Legion, Mooseburger, and Trow Properties, and then the EDA property. Just gravel roadway, it's against our ordinance, dust-free condition, so the idea there is to pave it and get it more use out of the parking lot, northeast corner. We do have that EV charger that we talked about, so we do have, we're kind of setting up the pad in the very northeast corner of the parking lot there. We're going to run the conduit, and then Caston Electric's going to set the EV charger and pull the wires back, so we will have a two-stall EV charger in the northeast corner. Continue moving on. Again, interrupt me if you got any questions.
That lot on the north side, it will have curb, right?
Yep, there'll be curb all along that north side.
Jeff?
Yep. If you're referring to some of that parking back there, we have a public open house. We've met with Mooseburger, and I think the next Claremont Farmers owner there. I'm still going to have our staff reach out to the Legion, because the Legion, I think, kind of does some cut-through parking there, and then also Trow Properties, as we're moving their driveway in front of the north there, and kind of separating them from the parking lot. So we are going to reach out to those property owners and let them know what the plan is. But I think it's going to clean it up back there, because we're gonna, everything else gravel, that at least is on our property, is going to be relaid as turf, so it's going to clean it up back there and make it look a lot nicer. So I'm still on the page, Public Works does pile snow kind of in that ditch between the railroad track, so we do have some drive-over curb there, so Public Works can still push snow off and pile it there in large snow events in the, the Main Street area. Sheet number 34 there, that shows us draining the low point on the north side of the railroad tracks at Second Avenue and Third Avenue. You can see we do have a storm sewer continuing in the east, that's that pink line out to Main Street, that's across Diane O'Brien's parking lot. So previous council, the, the direction at the time was to negotiate with Diane to get us an easement, and the understanding was that she would not pay her street assessment for, for a second, so we were successful with Mrs. O'Brien on getting that. So I think we'll probably memorialize that as we go through the assessment process, that we're going to defer her assessment in lieu of getting that storm sewer. We really needed it to get, get the storm sewer out there, just the way in the land was pretty tough, and it's going to help us save a lot more money of continuing that storm sewer down the railroad tracks to Highway 57. So I think it's a win for everybody. We got it close to our property, and actually requested it, close to our property, in case we're ever going to expand and do something there, so it didn't cover the property much. 34, I guess around 35, this just shows a trail along the backyard of the houses in Prairie View Park, and that just continues north, out to the sidewalk in Bigelow Voight 8th up on 12th Avenue, and then it's going to leave on sheet 37 there, Ian, you're getting your money's worth tonight out of Ian. He's, shows where the sidewalk comes out on 12th there, and then it kind of will run the sidewalk for a little while, and that trail will go to the north, and then where you see that right-hand side, they're in the far north end, that's where Bigelow Homes is proposing to continue their trail through their subdivision they just started last fall, so tie all the trail networks together. 38 there, Ian, it shows filling in essentially the ditch on the 8th, 8th Street Southwest, south of the parking ride, filling that ditch in and having a trail built up off of 8th Street, and then some curbing gutter on 8th Street. So that's going to be a trail that can end basically at Meadowlark Avenue, which is actually the entrance to Windsor Court, the Mobile Home Community there, with the idea that there may be some expansion there, so we're still working with them about the sale of the EDA land, so that could be coming too, and ultimately have more pressure from a pedestrian network. So that's about it on that sheet. Sheet 41 shows some pedestrian ramp details, so if you want to learn how to design a pedestrian ramp, you got to put a bunch of grades on there, so that shows there to make sure it's compliant. So it's the end of the plan set, I wanted to keep it high level. Happy to answer any questions you have, but again, there is a resolution in your council packet to approve plans and ordering the bids on April 18th at 10 o'clock. And then we would likely have a calling hearing on your April 23rd meeting for the special assessments after the bids. And again, we're assessing Second, Third Avenue street costs and the cost of 8th Street Northwest for that water main project. So that was all previously approved, we're all consistent with that, so it'd be similar to like what we have tonight with the final assessment hearing at that time, after we call it, at the 20th, meeting on the 23rd.
Brandon?
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with the area. Schedule D, the Prairie View Trail. Looking on sheet one in the little corner, why is there a gap? Is there something else there that we're connecting to?
Yeah, there's a road there, so our trail kind of comes up behind those houses, comes into a sidewalk, and then we have sidewalk along a curve there, and then that little gap to the north there continues that trail. So there'll just be a sidewalk between the trails.
So, yeah, so on the, on the sheet one sheet, where it's got kind of like the grayed-out town, there's stuff missing in that area that's been built up?
Yeah, our...
Kind of what I assumed.
Yeah, there's the new subdivision there now, so you can see, Ian, if you go there, that, that's, we're northbound as we go down the sheets. Go the other way, Ian.